I see a quorum present. With that, I am calling to order the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee meeting, 1,655, as amended on Thursday, September 21st, 2023, at 6:01 PM at the Mount Everett Library.
I have a point.
Okay.
I have a point of order.
Yes.
Can somebody?
Already?
Yeah. Can somebody state for the record that the meeting of the subcommittee?
I will when I get to it. I already did it online.
No, but I wanted to be clear from the beginning of this meeting that there was no prior meeting held, and I want it to be part of the minutes of this meeting.
It will be when I get to that subcommittee. It's not in order here. I promise you, I will not forget it.
A point of order.
I've already done it once.
Well, but a point of order is always in order, and it's not debatable.
Carl, you're starting. All right. The point of order is that the community outreach did not meet today with a quorum not present.
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on. Approval of our school committee minutes, 1654, for September 7th, 2023. I will take a motion to approve. That's Jim. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any corrections to that? Okay, I have a couple.
Yeah, okay.
If we go to the second page of the minutes, "Business with District Member Towns." "Update on Regional School District Planning Board." Jake Everwine. Everwine is spelled incorrectly. And errors made at the August 28, 2023 meeting with members of the eight select boards and members of their finance committees held at. So that's, I want that correction in there. Moving on, page three, under the superintendent's report, third paragraph down, Bill Daggett's name has to be corrected in spelling. And then two paragraphs from there, Dr. Rigobud reported every Monday she will distribute. You're not conducting.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
Right. Distribute weekly communication, and it's reviewing the happenings at the Southern Berkshire Regional District. And that was the last of, whoop, wait, maybe it isn't. No, it isn't the last of my corrections. Page eight, on community relations, public school advocacy. Second paragraph down, it's the superintendent. There aren't plural. And below that, the part that says, "A member of a community requested." We did not say that we were going to have a line-by-line review. We said that the school committee previously passed a motion and sent it to the RSDPB requesting a presentation of the financial reports no sooner than 30 days before the town votes, special town votes. And that's the end of my corrections.
I have one correction.
Anybody? Yes, sir. Where are you, sir?
Page three, the ultimate paragraph on page three.
Mm-hmm.
A mis- it reads as follows, "A misrepresentation of school policy was made to a homeschooled student indicating that he could not attend prom as per school policy."
Hmm.
And that's not correct. It wasn't a misrepresentation of school policy. It was a representative representation that was made to him of school po- to this student of school policy when in fact there was no, no correct school policy. It was a policy that was either invented by Assistant Principal Sternagel or...
Without name, let's go into the, so if I change it to, "A representation of school policy was made to a homeschool student indicating that he could not attend prom."
Right. If you eliminate the "mis," that's, oh, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
And then it follows, all right, so, good catch. Anybody else have anything? Okay, in that case, we'll take a vote. Carl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis? Dennis?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have any miscellaneous correspondence?
We do not.
Okay. Do we have a student representative for board?
No elections are soon, and then we'll have our representative.
Great.
They're campaigning currently.
The campaign goes on.
I'm sorry.
Yes, 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 yes.
I was, I was concentrating on my coffee. So, I want to go back. I have a, a point of order, and I think it's my last point of order tonight.
Go ahead.
On the miscellaneous correspondence. According to a direct, and this is a direct, well, this isn't a direct quote because I don't have it in front of me, but the Attorney General's Guide to the Open Meeting Law. And, and I have had a discussion during a prior school committee meeting where something I offered as miscellaneous correspondence was rejected as not being miscellaneous correspondence. The agenda is not for the school committee, primarily. It is primarily for everybody else in the community. We have, they have to know, and I still don't know what miscellaneous correspondence is, and the Attorney General says there must be a statement of what an agenda item is to consider. It doesn't. It says miscellaneous correspondence, and there was no miscellaneous correspondence to report. But if you don't define what miscellaneous correspondence is, how is the public going to know what does and does not fit in that category? So I object, I object to the use of that, to the use of that term without definition.
So, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
If we then state in future agendas what is consisted in miscellaneous correspondence.
That would, that would correct my, that would, that would, that would resolve it.
Okay.
For me, until it comes up again.
Of course. All right, moving along. So, do we have a student spotlight?
We do have a student spotlight. So Mr. Miller is going to lead us in our student spotlight this evening.
Right, class. Here we go. And Mr. Sullivan, could you please join me?
Right, just going to join our circle. Over here. Yeah. So generally, classroom reading morning messages, and Mr. Thompson is going to share some of those messages. So, I think if you read my newsletter, you probably, I think it was two weeks ago, saw that I shared a little bit about responsive classroom, and how if you walk into any classroom pre-k through five in any of our three buildings in elementary, so South Agremont, New Marlboro, and Undermountain, you would, if you go in around between eight, eight, eight-ten and eight-thirty, you would witness students engaged in one of four activities that are integral to morning meeting. And the reason we do morning meeting, meeting in every single classroom, every single day, in every single grade level in class in elementary, is it sets a positive, welcoming, nurturing tone. Sometimes teachers embed academics into the meeting, sometimes they embed current events, but it's an opportunity for early literacy-age-appropriate activities and also just to have fun. So, you are now compelled, no choice here, to participate in one aspect of that, which is the greeting. And the point of the greeting, I'm going to read it straight from the website, is that students exchange warm greetings to foster a sense of connection and community. So up here, I have, this is a first-grade message. The four components are greeting, a share, an activity or game, and a message. And obviously, it's going to look a little bit different depending on the age and the group and size of the class. So this will be a first-grade one, but now we're going to go to a morning message from today. I believe we have a second-grade one. It's okay. And what we're going to do is roll, engage the greeting.
Is that it?
And so, oh, no, this is a math embedded one. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Almost there. Here we go. Okay, so as you can see, this is a second-grade class from Undermountain. I should cut that out. We're celebrating her, so that's okay. So she had her greeting, and the greeting is double dice greeting. The way this works is that we're going to take turns, oh, we're just going to model it. Good morning, Paul.
Six plus two is eight.
And then I'm going to say, "Good morning, Paul. Yes, six plus two is eight." Good morning, I'm Charles. Three plus four is seven. Good morning, Carl. You got to roll.
You got to roll.
I count that support. Three plus six is eight.
Good morning, Dennis. Six plus two is eight. Still is, huh?
Still is. Remember, remember this one component. You wanted to acknowledge the person and say, "Good morning. Yes, six plus two is eight."
Six and five are eleven. Good morning.
And then you want to address each student by name.
Good morning, Art.
Good morning, Art.
Good morning.
Yes, six plus five is eleven.
Yes, six plus five is eleven.
Good, Art. I'm afraid of what's going on here.
You got to roll them. Good morning, Dr. Rigobud.
Wow, that was very, "Good morning." So am I doing this, five plus one is six? And then, yeah.
Yep.
Good morning.
Bonnie.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Hi.
Six plus three is nine.
I think he says yes, right? Just a lot of pressure. Just a lot of pressure.
All of your advanced skills, your degree, your Columbia, your Columbia University.
Don't mess it up.
Your degree.
Charles, you're waiting.
Prove, prove you can tell. Art, aren't you supposed to say something to me, Bonnie?
Five plus two is seven.
Five plus two is seven, Carl.
Well, thank you, Bonnie. Okay, thank, thank you, and nice to see you this morning. David, hello. Six plus four is ten.
Yes, good morning, Carl. Six plus four equals ten.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Round of applause for your class. So, one thing I want to point out, and being on this day. I'm sure it was a little corny, is that there are opportunities to help kids learn in multiple ways, right? One is that although there's a law start of greeting people, it's something we do try to emphasize, not only to instill self-confidence in kids about their own identity and so on, but also to teach them, now when they enter a room and so on, they are the witness, they belong, and they're here to support it. The second thing you want to go over, and it's hard, right, for kids to learn multi-step directions. Now, I don't want to put David on the spot, but he was one of only two people to follow the directions correctly, right?
Wow.
So it's complicated, and obviously, you're going to iterate and you're going to learn, right? And then the last thing is that after this greeting, there's then a share, and then there's always an activity and a game. And it's, it's, I can't say, as simple as this is, this routine really sets a wonderful tone in any classroom I go into. So, thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
I did this this morning with class. I sat on a really full piled floor. I had to sit because that's where they sit.
We did not make you sit.
The kids really embrace it. They, they're poking each other, they're not paying attention, or looking at each other. And at the end, because I was filling in for a teacher, I decided to teach math instead of sculpture literacy. They were like, "Whoa, that's not what we do." So, they really embrace it.
Yeah.
Anyone else who wants to help, but I want to say particularly, given what I've heard, you know, you hear reports of the impact from the pandemic, and the fact, I'll never forget this, LA teacher said, she had a kindergarten class, and they first were coming back two years ago. She said they were like fear of children.
Yeah.
They haven't, they don't know how to interact with each other, the concept of a greeting.
Yeah.
Sitting still or anything. So, these kids are now second grade, and...
Socialization is important, right?
Yeah.
You know, and if you haven't had the opportunity, you need to give people, you need to flex that muscle. Yes, Carl?
I don't think we want the last to recognize the response to it.
That's true.
Well...
Could you show those dice again?
Yeah.
No, 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 I don't have that. I want to see.
You think they're weighted?
No. So, I assume, I assume that the blue and gold was a conscious choice.
I don't know where I thought of that.
And is it accurate?
Potential.
Who chose the dice? You should assume, because I noticed that Mr. Carpenter is also loosely speaking wearing blue and gold.
Did you notice my sneaker? And my shoe sizes?
Did I notice what?
They're blue and gold.
Oh, no, I didn't. But, okay, good. And Mr. The Pizza's halfway there.
I shouldn't have changed the shirt. I have one.
Dennis is in his Hawaiian mode.
Yes.
Yeah, and if anyone ever wants to see, there's a plethora of resources, book available online that we share, and pray for the teacher.
Who came up with this whole procedure?
What's that?
You know, Julie.
That morning meeting is a, is a longstanding curricular. We've been doing this for years, but we've...
No, I know that, but this particular way to get little ones to engage.
Oh, this is one of the methods that, so today, this was Mrs. Barrett's classroom, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Mrs. Barrett's classroom?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. And I'm glad I was able to add. Okay.
On camera.
On camera, there's a lot of pressure.
A lot of pressure.
Oh.
Oh.
No.
The morning meeting book. All right, we're up to public comment. Do we have public to comment? Two, 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 two. Any public to comment? Did someone say yes?
I thought I heard yes.
Lucy, was that you? I thought you were going to go later.
I'm going to be permitted to speak at the eight towns, is correct?
Right.
Okay, then I don't have any public comment.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Business managers report.
None today?
None today. Business with district member towns. Update on regional school district planning board. So, just to give you a couple of things before Lucy does, on the, unless something has changed in the past few minutes, on the 26th of this month, the regional school district planning board will be voting on the regional agreement, which means from this group here, Kim, Jim, myself, Carl, and we don't have Nancy here, but Nancy, the five of us will be voting at that meeting. After that, we have, as you know, we'll talk about more later, on the 27th, we are doing a friendly walk through the regional agreement and helping people from any of the eight towns. That's how we've put it forward. It's the superintendent's conversation with members of the school committee. It is, I will put it on the agenda as a school committee meeting. It is not a mandated, you know, part of our agenda, but it would be great if as many people as can are able to, to come on the 27th. It will be in the tack pack at seven o'clock. Do we know if we'll be able to have childcare?
I haven't asked, but we, I'm sure we can put that out.
All right. And then, yep.
It's 27th of this month?
27th of this month.
Okay.
Time?
And...
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock. I'll say it again. And then, the 23rd of October is when a number of our towns are voting on the warrant. So the latest, the version of the warrant, we will have within minutes, unless Jake sent it out already, and all of the towns will have the same warrant. It was hoped that all eight towns would be voting on the same date. That may or may not happen. But on the 23rd of October, both of us in Sheffield will be voting, and New Marlboro will be voting, Gray Bay Arlington will be voting. Do you know when All Foods voting?
No, Lucy may know. I don't know.
Oh, okay.
But, but...
Yes, sure.
Can I make a point about this September 27th meeting?
Yes.
If it's being posted as a school committee meeting, and it's only six days, it was six days away from now? Today is the 21st, I think?
Yeah, it's next Wednesday.
Okay. If you post it as a school committee meeting, you might want to now take a, a brief, ask a question of the members, because if you, you may want to make sure that you have a quorum.
It's, I'm doing in case there is a quorum. In other words, I don't want to be in a position of having a, a quorum showing up, and I hadn't announced it.
Yeah, but if you do announce it and a quorum doesn't show up, then what do you do?
That's fine. I don't have to, I don't have to open the meeting for a report. I don't have to close, I don't have to do all of those things. It's, it's known as CYA.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay. And with that, also that you should know, our attorney has done quite an extensive review of the regional agreement. He was on a call today with Beth and Peter Dillon, Lucy, Jake, the attorney that the RSDPB, Mr. Dupre is, and reviewing the regional agreement. So, pretty much, we're at penultimate time in this whole process. Any questions for me before I turn it over? Lucy has some comment. Yes?
Are we going to get, when can we expect to get a copy of this in our, in our invoices? Well, the, the proposed agreement, as it will appear?
What's going to appear is the warrant. It will refer to the regional agreement, and you will get both.
Okay. And when can we expect those?
As soon as I get the warrant.
Fair enough.
If, and that's to the war- Jake, I see you're there. To the war- when are you sending the warrant? You said by the weekend.
Warrant's been sent.
Oh, in that case, we can send it to you immediately.
Excellent.
I mean, not immediately, I'm not going to do it now. Okay, so you'll have the warrant and the regional agreement. All right, any other questions? With that, Lucy?
Yes, thanks, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
So, just to recap where we are. So, the regional agreement, the draft that was reviewed by the planning board in August, is posted on the website. The regional agreement has been posted on the website for some time. There are weeks that have been made since July, when the planning board voted to approve the draft of the regional agreement, subject to any changes suggested by DESI or council. So since July, the meat of the regional agreement has been available, and it was actually approved by the planning board.
Lucy, so you know, that, that was distributed, and people were hurt.
Yes, my...
That, the, what we voted on in July, I was talking about the one that we just got this past week. That's now...
Yeah, no, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
So, so there have been some tweaks made at the suggestion of DESI since the draft we approved in July. They were, some votes were reviewed at our August meeting, right? And there were no questions asked about it. And the most recent revisions were distributed to the planning board members on, I believe, Monday, or maybe, I think it was Monday of this week. Yeah, Monday. And we will be reviewing those tweaks at our meeting on Tuesday. And if the planning board is comfortable with those tweaks, my expectation is that we will have a vote on whether to approve that final draft on Tuesday. So that's where we stand. But for those who are interested in getting a jumpstart on reading the regional agreement, there is a draft of the regional agreement posted on the website, and your members, your school committee members, who are also on the planning board, also have in hand the most recent draft that we're going to be taking up on Tuesday. I'm sure we'll be happy to send you that draft today. So it is available for those who want to read it now. The other thing that will be before the planning board on Tuesday is the report that would accompany any recommendation of the planning board to move forward with forming a single district. So I expect that will be circulated either tomorrow or Saturday to planning board members. And it really is just a reformatting of the information that is already published and on the website in our fact briefs. So it's not going to be any terribly new content in there. So that's where we are in terms of planning board process. The warrant, the draft warrant that was circulated some time back, has been out there for at least a couple of weeks to the town council. And we did today actually have a conversation with your council. He had some questions about it, he had some suggested revisions. We talked through those. So we've been through that process of review with both council for Southern Berkshire and council for Berkshire Hills. We have not yet received from you, I know Bonnie was working on a list of questions that I understood the school committee had about the regional agreement. We haven't received those questions yet. It'd be really helpful in terms of the meeting on the 27th, if we could have those ahead of time, so that we could be sure to address them at the very beginning of the meeting. I think that would probably be the most efficient approach, so the expensive questions. It'd be great if you could get them to us as soon as possible, but certainly before Wednesday. We were invited, asked to attend your meeting on the 27th, so that we could walk the group through the regional agreement. We're happy to do that. But in order for us to walk you through the regional agreement, we sort of have to have the floor, right? So one of my questions for you is whether we can work through some protocol for that meeting that allows us to, number one, just give an overview of the agreement, and then number two, address whatever specific questions you know you have about the agreement, so we can get those addressed before opening that up to questions from the floor, because I think that's going to be a more helpful way to present the information. It's a forty-page plus agreement. It's... It's written the way a regional agreement is written, which is, um, very precise, uh, and with sort of every possibility addressed. Um, and so it's not that easy for folks who aren't used to reading agreements to, uh, get through and analyze line by line. So I think it'd be really great if we could get the questions ahead of time and be allowed to address those before questions are taken from the floor. So I, I would ask the chair whether that's the plan. Uh, you said that the plan was to walk through the regional agreement. Um, I, I, I know every word in that agreement. Uh, I drafted most of those words. So I think it makes most sense for me to do the walking through of the agreement. Uh, but if you have another plan in mind, I'd, I'd like to hear it and I, I think we should have that.
All right, the first part is, um, I like the idea of us, of the questions. So a- ahead of time, um, as detailed as you want to be, if you could send me by Sunday. No, I'm sorry, it's a holiday for some of us. Um, by Monday night, if you, and anybody who has any questions that we would forward, um, to Lucy and Jake. So please put it in writing, send it to me and I will forward the questions. Um, in terms of the protocol for the twenty-seventh, the agenda is that this is a, the way we did it three times last year, a conversation with the superintendent and the school committee. So what we have is probably one of the people, few people in the eight towns who really has been breathing and living this regional agreement. Renee Wood has, um, come to us. She's going to be taking us through the regional agreement. Beth will be opening the session, will explain. It's, this is the first of hopefully another three this year of the superintendent's conversations. I will speak minimally about the process. And then Renee has put together a, it's not finalized yet, a PowerPoint presentation. And in addition, we will have our attorney, um, who will be zooming in for the evening to cover the, some of the points that, um, we feel are in the hands of an attorney. So that's our protocol for that day. Obviously, um, you know, things that you want to say during that period of time or respond to, you will definitely, and Jake will definitely have the opportunity to do that. But that's the protocol we've laid out for Wednesday.
Okay, well, well, let me suggest this, um, because uh, your counsel asked some questions today during our, our call that, um, suggested that he had not yet had an opportunity to carefully review the agreement. Um, and I don't know what's on Renee's PowerPoint, but I think everyone would agree that it serves no one to present in a PowerPoint, uh, information that's incorrect. And I'm not suggesting that that's in her PowerPoint, I haven't seen her PowerPoint. But to make sure that that's not in the PowerPoint, I would ask that you allow us to look at the PowerPoint before it's presented to the community because it serves no one to get inaccurate information out there. And there's a lot of, uh, many misstatements and misinformation being disseminated about what's in the regional agreement. Um, and I'm not saying any of that's intentional, but, um, lawyers should really be walking people through an agreement. Uh, and, um, you know, it could be your counsel, it could be me, it could be our counsel. Uh, but I really do think that it should be a lawyer who is walking through an agreement with the community and not someone who's trying to interpret uh, words in the agreement and they get it right and they get it wrong. So if, if Renee's gonna be doing a presentation, then I think you need to send us the PowerPoint ahead of time so we can correct any inaccuracies in that presentation before they get disseminated to the community. Because as I said, that serves no one.
All right, we will take that under advisement and see what we can do here. It's not, I'm not going to make an instant decision. This is the school committee's decision.
Right, don't expect it.
Mm-hmm. Um, and I am hoping that if we get all of the, and if I get questions ahead of time, I will forward those to you prior to the holiday. If not, anything else that I get by Monday night, you will have. There's questions given.
Isn't Bonnie this chair of Sheffield, so she has to really understand this agreement?
She.
I'm just, because isn't that part of what she's supposed to be doing right now?
She's not the chair anymore. She got, was lucky enough to just be a member of it.
Yeah.
But she has gone through it over, she's, she has sent lists of questions over the years. Um, which I know many of you have seen, um, where her questions are. But I will definitely take it under advisement. David?
Um, I, I have a few questions slash comments. Um, first off, regarding the questions to be written down and asked, that will depend on us having adequate time to review the current proposed agreement. So Sunday is, um, when's the timing?
You were just told we're beginning it today.
Yeah, well, it's a forty-page document that has to be reviewed carefully. Three days is not a lot of time.
Well, guess what? That's what you've got, so you'll do as best you can
Right.
with that amount of time. And any questions, great minds could do it.
Right, well, um, the other question is, it, what purpose does it serve to have Renee presenting it over Lucy or anyone else who's a lawyer? Like, what's the purpose of having Renee do it?
This is how, when it was put together and it was brought before the community outreach, this is what the community outreach brought to the full school committee, um, at our last meeting. So that's the way we opted to go.
So we're bringing the same information that's already been presented to this meeting again?
No, it's a different, the, what was brought to the community outreach is the fact that Renee would be doing this presentation. It was voted at community outreach and then it was brought to the full school committee to approve at our last meeting. So the information, the actual content is not there. The process that this would be a superintendent's conversation with members of the school committee is the process.
Right.
Okay, next question?
Uh, like, I guess that's, uh, that's it. I just don't remember that, uh, that vote spec- specifying that the selectman from Sheffield would be presenting information.
Well, you did it, you did it totally in open, um, she was there, we did it totally in open and then the community outreach brought it to the full group. All right, any other questions? Carl?
Yeah, uh, to follow up on what David was just questioning you about. You say that the community outreach, that, that Renee Wood presented this to the, to the community outreach subcommittee, which voted and recommended to the full school committee.
Right.
Now, shouldn't that have appeared in the minutes of the, of the last school committee meeting that was held? I say that knowingly, it was not.
Yes, here it is. Here it is, that on September twenty-eighth.
Well, can you give me a page reference?
I am on page six. So it's the all eight towns on September twenty-seventh at seven P M. to discuss the regional agreement. Motion made by Sarah Pollack, seconded by Paul Stewart, it was resolved to accept the Community Relations Public School Advocacy Subcommittee's recommendation to hold a community conversation.
That was.
Inviting everyone from all eight towns on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, seven P M.
Yeah, no, no.
To discuss the regional agreement.
I, I, I see that, but you included something that was not, is not, in that, uh, i- i- in that motion that was made by Sarah and seconded by me.
Mm.
Uh, and I, I would have had a different view. Uh, I think, not necessarily, but I probably would have had a different view. Uh, and maybe others would as well. If you had mentioned that the presentation, I, I, I think I heard you say.
You were there when Renee made the whole, the whole present.
I definitely was there, but, but no one said anything about her making the presentation by PowerPoint or otherwise on September twenty.
PowerPoint was not mentioned.
But with Renee, if, if it was recommended to the full committee that Renee Wood would be making the presentation on September twenty-seventh, why isn't that in that motion?
I don't know why whoever did, did this, did it that way. I can, the presentation made at community outreach and I don't have either the chair of that committee or the recorder of that committee here. But I guarantee we had a vote on it and it was approved.
I was there.
If I may, Bonnie?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, with all due respect, I do not think it a wise decision to have someone who did not sit in on the year's worth of meetings as we drafted provision by provision this regional agreement, uh, presenting, and who is not a lawyer, uh, presenting, uh, walking through the terms of the regional agreement. I don't think that's a good idea. Uh, I, I don't think, uh, it's a protocol or process that is designed to get accurate information out there. Um, and I understood that we were being asked to come to this meeting. That was the request that came from Jesse Carpenter at the eight-town meeting. That's what I understood. Renee Wood was asking that we go through the agreement line by line at your meeting so that people could answer questions. That's what we're prepared to do. That's what we worked our schedules around to be able to accommodate. And I think that's what you should let us do. I think otherwise there are gonna be mistakes made and it really, it's, it's gonna be a shame.
If you will remember when we first wrote the dates to you, you didn't know, or Jake didn't, that whether you would be available in any way. So we've moved ahead in that way. Kim?
Isn't this supposed to be a community conversation? It was our superintendent, not a eight-town regional school board as invitation.
We invited all.
We invited them to have input, not to run it, correct?
Right.
And that's, my feeling is with them presenting and doing this, that gives an overtone of them running it versus being there for support to answer questions. And I was at the same meeting that, where Jesse was, and I do not remember Jesse asking them to go through the, uh, regional agreement for us.
Actually, that's exactly what he said. He said, we're holding a meeting so that we can go through the, the regional agreement. That was the question asked.
And you have that meeting?
I, I remember my response, Kim, because I said, we hadn't thought about that, but we will think about it. And then the request came from Bonnie uh, for this, for September twenty-seventh. So uh, I, I don't think it's really productive, uh, to look back in history, but let's look forward. What setup is most likely to get accurate information out to the community about what the original agreement provides and what it doesn't provide? Uh, a lawyer who's been in every meeting since the first draft of this regional agreement aimed to be, or someone who has not attended the meetings, who is not a lawyer, is trying to interpret the agreement and doesn't have the benefit of that background. And I think, I would ask your school committee to reconsider the format to allow for a presentation that is most likely to present accurate information.
You already have that scheduled. There's one at Monument and there's one at Mount Everett.
Exactly.
That's.
And Mulholland.
This, this was an agreement, this was a, this was a meeting that was described to us as being just for the purpose of going through the regional agreement. I note that in your invitation, although that's how it was described to us, I note that in your invitation, it says that this meeting is gonna cover other topics, including the Warren article, including other topics related to the merger. So you, you said two separate things. In Beth's cover email, it says this is just to go through the regional agreement. Click here for the invitation. Then you click into the invitation and there are four different topics. There's regional agreement, Warren article, a third, which I can't remember, and other topics relating to the merger. So it's very unclear what the subject matter of this meeting is. And this is the first I'm hearing, it may have been discussed at your school committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, but no one told us. This is the first I'm hearing that Renee Wood is going to be presenting, walking through the regional agreement for the community. She's a member of the community, I'm a member of the community, okay?
Okay, Kyle?
Um, I would, the, the regional agreement is drafted for the public to understand, correct? It's not drafted for only lawyers to understand. So I don't, I don't see the distinction as to a lawyer has to present this material. It seems to me that if it's for the public to vote on, it should be for the public to understand and to interpret and vote on it. It doesn't, you've written the regional agreement and that's what they're voting on. They're not voting on who decided what in the regional agreement.
So what is the process going to be if something is said that's incorrect as Renee Wood is walking through the agreement? And what, how are we gonna get that information corrected?
Lauren, you going to be at the meeting?
I am. Am I gonna be able, am I gonna be permitted to respond on every slide?
No.
The idea is that you, your, if your now schedule and Jake's schedule allows and you're going to be there, which was not the case originally, you hadn't set those times available, we will work a way that is accommodating. We don't want this to be a debate show. We want people to be able to ask their questions about things that are still bothering them. They want to know information about the, the transition period. They want to know what's happening to the property if there, with the merger, who, the, taking the assets. So there are a lot of things that are very pertinent to this that from a different perspective, and you know Renee has sent Jake about a million questions during the two-plus years. So the decision was, this is how we would go. Nobody is going to in any way not be taking advantage of having you and, and if Jake there, along with our attorney who's going to be there, to respond to things that you may think need a different look or another tweak to it. So we're moving ahead with the way this was planned, the way it was voted on. I am more than happy, I was going to speak to Renee after our meeting tonight, that we look at a smooth protocol for involvement of you and appreciate that you will be there. But the school committee's vote and the subcommittee was that they wanted it very much to be a, I wanna say like down home, they wanted it to be the issues that have come up over the course of the years that they feel are questions. It will not in any way stop you. It will not in any way stop you from responding. But this is not going to be a, just for perception perspective, there was not a sense in the subcommittee at all that they were going to have the walkthrough the way that you, you would do it. And you've been very helpful and Jake's been very helpful at our various meetings. This was, and I'm sorry that neither one of them are here, but this was very much the sentiment during the Community Outreach, uh, the Community Outreach Subcommittee meeting. So we will, we will make it work.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. I just want to make-
You're welcome.
Two corrections, um, to what you said.
Go right ahead.
We never said we weren't available on September twenty-seventh. What we said was that we had sent out a doodle poll before you settled on your September twenty-seventh, uh, to have our planning board meeting either on the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh. And I didn't have all the responses back when you asked me if I was available on the twenty-seventh.
That is correct.
I wasn't available.
That is correct.
That's not quite correct. And then-
No, that is correct, what you said.
Yeah. Um, in terms of the two letters we got from Renee Wood, uh, those were less questions and more positions that she had on what should be in the regional agreement. If you go back and read them, and I've read both of them several times, they're her positions on what should be in the regional agreement. And many of those positions were debated at our planning board meetings with you there. And the planning board, including you, agreed it, agreed to go a different way from what Renee Wood had proposed. So it's not that there were questions in her letters that were unanswered. It was positions, uh, that she wanted us to take, some of which we did, some of the suggested revisions we made, and some of which the planning board decided not to make. So characterizing those letters as lists of questions is not accurate. It was a list of provisions that she thought should be in the regional agreement. And because of that, I think, um, having her present the regional agreement is not the appropriate choice.
Okay. I have addressed with her exactly that. That, um, this is not the place where she is going to advocate for her percentages of who gets what vote. This is not the place for her to advocate for things that are not part of the regional agreement. And she said she is absolutely fine with that. I am very aware of her communications where she asks questions and then gives the reason why it should be a certain way. I think we, I'm not going to end, end it here. We will look and see, and if you have suggestions, and Beth will figure a way to make this work. The objective is that the people in that tack pack leave feeling better prepared to go and vote and know what they're voting on.
Well, I share that objective completely, but I, I think you should reconsider who's doing the presenting. And if you don't want to have a lawyer do it, it's fine with me. Bonnie, why don't you do it? Or have Jake do it? Um, or, you know, have Beth do it. But someone who's been attending the meetings and who voted on these provisions should be the one presenting the proposed agreement.
Okay. I take that. I understand that. I have a conversation set with Renee when we get out of here. And I will let you know the results of that. And if we, if we decide we're making any changes as a result of what, you know, you've said. But you have to understand the concern. And I'm being as blunt here in front of everyone. There are still so many people who feel they haven't gotten the full story. And that's the real concern. So there are lots of things that wind up in, in the, when you start scrubbing the details. In other words, go back to the fact that all, the promises of savings, monetary savings are based upon class sizes of twenty or twenty-two. That was in the originals, all those reports initially. Neither one of our high schools have anything like that. Um, there are issues that come up in terms of people feeling very uncomfortable with this whole transition period. And, you know, someone will say, "Oh, you want the power of being on the school committee?" Yeah, right. I want my life returned. But the transition committee to be, you, no one of, of your, the team has said how this can work smoothly. And our attorney was told by the people he worked with at Desi, there is no money for a transition team. And to me, that looks like easily a half a million dollars maybe a year. So there are people who have numerous concerns. And you have fought like anything to make this go through. I don't know how in the world you managed to do your job in the midst of doing all this. You believe it passionately. And there's a lot of this that I totally believe in, in terms of what we could do together. I, I personally, which is why I shouldn't be the person making the major presentation. I don't think that this is a healthy regional agreement. That's my own, my own perspective. And I should not be making the presentation because I don't think I'd be able to hide it. So that's where I stand.
All right. Well, then why don't you allow someone who believes in the regional agreement to make the presentation?
All right, we're not, we're not, we're not going to testify.
Who have expressed their disagreement. I mean, if that's your position, Bonnie, that you're not, uh, qualified-
Shouldn't we agree or disagree?
To make the presentation because you don't agree with it, then choose someone who understands the agreement and thinks it's a good agreement to make the presentation.
That's not the point of the meeting.
That's not, that's not, it's, it's not-
It's supposed to be neutral.
But then have a neutral person, right? But don't have someone who has registered her objection to pretty much every provision in the draft regional agreement, um, over the last year and a half. I mean, that's not, that's not an impartial presentation of what's in the agreement.
Let's see what we could work out.
Yeah, okay.
I, I could see exactly what you're saying. And that's why I would say, I don't think I could hide my leanings and make a fair presentation. I could give some of the facts with all of this, and I understand what you're saying. But I also know what I've heard from so many people. And they don't want to hear it again the way they've been hearing it. So it might be totally different since it would be walking through the regional. Let's not continue this now. I'm going to let David have a last word.
Um, so I, I have a couple of different thoughts to come-
No, we don't, it's, it's seven o'clock. Just get to it.
I, I'm trying to. Um, to, to Kyle's point about it being digestible for the public, I do agree that that's important. And ultimately, we're all going to have to vote and decide if this is something we want to proceed with. But this is fundamentally a contract. And if you were making a contract with someone else, you would want a lawyer to look at it and say, "Hey, this is what it really means."
That's why we have, we paying our attorney to be there.
Right. Well, he should be the one presenting it then because we want someone who's neutral. And you're not neutral. Lucy's not neutral. Renee is not neutral. Renee is probably better suited to present the concerns of the public than him- she brought to them. But someone who's neutral and versed in legal contracts should be the one to make the presentation vote actually in it.
And Josh will be making, Josh will be making part of the presentation. So that's why we have him. That's why we're paying him. And we will see what we could do to work this out so it becomes a more-
This is something Lucy's talking about.
Amenable, because I think there are lots of, look, we're turning to the Regional Planning Board to give us the financial. We're not, the, that was the bill, that was the motion we passed four months ago, that no less than thirty days before the October twenty-third, that the Regional Planning Board will present the financials. So we're turning to that expertise. I think we can work something out, is my view. All right?
Okay, thank you.
And thank you. Remember, I'm not a litigator. I can't stand up to you, Lucy, on a lot of this. But I know what my opinion is and where my weaknesses are on this. And strengths.
You stand up to me all the time, Bonnie, but I, I would like to point out that I can't remember a provision in the regional agreement. Maybe you can. I can't remember a single provision in the regional agreement that we all voted on. You voted no on. So I'm really surprised to hear that you don't think the regional agreement stands up because we took each provision of the regional agreement in, in sections and we debated each section. And I believe, and I haven't gone back and checked all the votes, but I believe that if not a hundred percent of the time, ninety percent of the time, you voted in favor of that language.
I did.
You were in favor of the language that is in the draft agreement.
I did. It's what's the underlying things such as issues of transportation, issues of class size, issues of all the special programs that we have. There are so many issues that are, you can't write or into the regional agreement. And that's where my concerns are. Nobody should be saying that they're going to get the early college high school because they're not. Nobody should be saying that ever, I, I live in the northern part of Sheffield and I tend to drive on the fast side. Hope no police are listening. I cannot get to the entrance, and I don't pick kids up on the way. I can't get to the entrance of the Hill for Monument in, the best I've ever done is, I've been clocking it, nineteen minutes. I'm not picking up kids. I live as far north in Sheffield practically as you can be. So there are lots of things, and I know what, because Art and I were involved in those bus contracts. And there's, I know when Maureen Messini says, "There are roads you can't get through." We lived it, where in New Marlborough and Monterey, you cannot get through. So if you're saying you're going to be able to get kids this amount of time, you're not going to be able to do it. So for me, it's what's been written, no matter how many times I go through, I find little tweaks here and there. It's what's underneath this. And that's where my concern is.
Okay, but those are not regional agreement issues. Those are, those are issues, um, that are, um, sort of policy issues, questions you have about transportation, but those are not regional agreement issues. That's a different topic.
Yeah, but the, but-
And what we're talking about is who should be presenting on the regional agreement. And I agree with the sentiment of your colleague that if, if you want to have your counsel present on it, that's fine. Uh, but it should be someone who's advising you on what's really in there without any particular bias about, uh, the formation of a single district or not.
Okay, thank you. I will absolutely let you know as soon as I speak with her and work it, hopefully work something through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And thanks for taking all the time to do this. Um, all right. Moving on, my chairman's report, I have to tell you, I was at the Sheffield Fair. I really lo-, Stephanie, um, brought all kinds of artwork bright and early that morning. And people just, Jim joined me and everybody wanted to buy the artwork. They wanted to buy all the T-shirts that Beth gave me. They wanted to, we should do it as a fundraiser. But I, loads and loads of people were asking about the merger. And even though, you know, it was, that was not the purpose there, um, it was definitely on people's minds. I'm really glad I did it. It was not as well attended this year as last year, but I think it was good. We spoke to a lot of people. Jim?
Yeah, I agree. But, um, the first guy who talked to me when I got out of the car, the guy was parking, said, "What's your opinion on the, uh, regional agreement?" What was the topic? It was also nice to see just all the other stuff. I didn't stay for the cowflock.
No, it was him.
Did you get out before the rain started?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got out before the rain when that came down. But it was really wonderful to see, you know, the people there, people taking the T-shirts, putting them on right away, um-
And dropping students.
And thank you very much. If I forgot, I had a great group of, um, ladies soccer team who came and then because we had more than we needed in terms of help, they went over and did face painting. And then I had drone experience. Thank you, middle school drone. Except our little friend there, Nico, then wound up with COVID. Not because of the Sheffield Fair. Mm-hmm. So, um, but he's fine. So given how much time the other took, why don't we go to the superintendent's report?
Sure. I'm, I'm going to keep it super, uh, short because, uh, you're going to hear from us in a few minutes on, uh, the district's strategy for continuous improvement. So, um, I'm just going to talk about two things. Um, the Transend grant work, um, has gotten underway. And, um, I had the opportunity last night to spend time with the other nine superintendents across the nation and, um, be introduced, uh, to them. And, and we started talking about, um, even though nationally we're all, um, part of rural districts, how similar and, um, and just different cool innovative ways to make these types of districts, um, successful. So it was really neat to meet a lot of people and I'm looking forward to the next ten months of, of working with these new colleagues. So that was great. Um, but we have, um, levels of teams, uh, that come with this grant experience. So, um, the core team meets, uh, every week on Thursday. So we had a meeting today with the core team. Uh, then there's a design team, which is a little bit bigger of a group, um, which we're proposing has a meeting, um, on October third. More details on exactly what that looks like. And then a community team, which will meet on October seventeenth, hopefully. So we'll be talking about what those look like and, um, and, you know, who's involved in those teams. But the community team is open to anybody who wants to be part of the community team. So, um, but, but much more detail to follow. We're just in our very early planning meetings. Um, and also, um, I happen to be at the-
You didn't talk about all the compliments you were getting from the Transend team.
About our fabulous, um, people, that, that's true. Um, they, they are very excited. I did talk about it. I did share because I happened to get off of the Transend meeting and I put it in my Monday notes. But, um, she was talking about, um, just the, the amount of people who are willing to participate in the community portion of this and, um, kind of what we're proposing, um, we do moving forward. And they're very excited because they said they've never seen, they've never worked with a district who has such, um, lofty aspirations about involving this many people and, um, and the fact that we, um, we want to involve as many as possible. They think we're, we're leveling up is what they called it. So I did put that in the Monday notes. Um, as I was trying to get out of my, um, Mass Association of School Business Officials meeting yesterday, I was approached, so those of you who are joining, um, us at the Cape at the Mass Association of School Superintendents and, um, School Committees Conference in November, um, I was asked if I would, um, be on a panel about finding the right fit for the superintendent in, um, um, between the school committee and the superintendent about the different types of backgrounds- um, between the school committee and the superintendent, about the different types of backgrounds that might make a particular uh, candidate for superintendent the right fit for our su-, uh, district, so um, I tried to say no, but they wouldn't let me, so anyway, um, maybe you guys will come and support me when I'm, when I'm on that panel, those who are coming. So I will leave it there for tonight, and, um-
Do you want to address the curriculum professional development?
Um, publicly?
No, just that, that's, she's out.
Uh, yes, so there won't be, but I, I will probably be doing it, again, the District of Strategy Improvement, so um, the curricula, the Director of Curriculum, um, Instruction and Professional Development, we need to change that, um, is on medical leave, and I will, um, do any reports in the interim. Um, and, uh, also Sandy had, uh, a commitment that she had to be at tonight for the next report, so um, she also could not be here tonight, but she will be back next time.
Okay, so we're up to district strategy for continuous?
I, 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 I have a couple of questions on the superintendent's report, if I might, they're very short questions, requiring very short answers. Um, may, may I go ahead?
Uh, you absolutely may.
Thank you. Um, Beth, uh, as you know, more than anybody perhaps, uh, the MCAS scores, uh, were, for the entire Commonwealth, were released on Tuesday, two days ago.
Correct.
Uh, we didn't, I didn't expect you to report it today, that would have been unreasonable. Can we expect at our next meeting on October twelfth that you will, with your analysis of, of the performance of Southern Berkshire, uh, of this district as compared to the Commonwealth as a whole?
Um, it is not slated to be, uh, we will be doing one, it was not slated to be on October twelfth, but I'm not saying, I, I don't know honestly that we will have done the full analysis, we do have people working on the more detailed analysis.
But certainly no later than, than the next meeting of October twenty-sixth.
It's, it's usually slated for around our first one, so it might be the end of October, I think is where it is, if you look on the proposed year-long agenda, that's a topic we're gonna look at, but yes, um, I, I would like to, but I will tell you, I did a sneak peek um, of the data when, when it came out, um, and thank you for bringing it up, because I actually did wanna mention that it was coming out. Um, and I am happy to report that we are, in all schools and as a district, um, in the area that says not requiring assistance, so that is all I have so far, that's been released, so that is a good, that is a good thing.
That is really good.
Ju- just, just for the, the-
But thank you.
Ju- general information of, of people who may be watching us, all of that information for every, for all three hundred and ninety-eight, is that how many school districts there are?
Three twenty-eight is close, I think, yeah.
Um, is available on the DESI website and others.
Correct, right.
Correct.
And was available as of, uh, Tuesday evening, right?
Tuesday. Mm-hmm.
However, may I just add one thing to you?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
The, uh, press has decided everywhere I've looked, to take a totally negative attitude towards the results.
Yeah, well, the press, they're entitled to do it, they can be wrong, they can be right, they can be halfway between.
That's true. But we should be aware, go ahead.
Right, uh, my next question is, um, and this is a matter of both law and, uh, policy. Uh, I had a discussion a few days ago with Lynette Gagnon. I'm sorry, I don't pronounce her name the way she does, but I'm stuck with pronouncing it the French way. Uh, asking her since she, her position has recently been taken by the seemingly lovely Michelle Castellana, we had a very brief conversation before this meeting, but, but, uh, Lynette said that she was no longer gonna be the RAO, and for anybody who doesn't know what that is, that's a Records Access Officer, uh, every municipal body is required to have one.
I'm just gonna stop you, she is the records officer until we transition it to Michelle, so there, yes, so we are absolutely not without one, so, yes.
Okay, that was the question, so we're not- Okay. Um, she didn't know the answer to that question.
She kinda did, but, but we talked about it afterwards, so I do appreciate it.
Oh, okay.
Going forward, so in other words, she still was, and it was a misinterpretation, but I didn't-
Okay, uh, next, um, in, in the, uh, in the minutes, uh, under enrollment, you say that you reviewed the enrollment report as of September one, uh, oh no, and, and October one, twenty twenty-three, which is a few days from now. The, uh, well, no, as of September one, the enrollment was six hundred and thirteen. And then in the next single sentence, paragraph, you say, Southern Berkshire took in sixty-eight students since the June twenty twenty-three report, but no, let me ask my question. My question is, that sentence doesn't make sense to me. What does took in sixty-eight students mean?
So, we registered a new number of sixty-eight students, like, meaning we had sixty-eight re- registrations.
It doesn't mean, does it, that the school enrollment has increased si- by sixty-eight students from June twenty twenty-three, correct?
Obviously, because as I said to you, there was a number that went out, but they didn't exactly correlate.
Okay, so would we be correct to read that as we have sixty-eight students that we didn't have last year, but we do not have an increase of sixty-eight students? Necessarily, that's not what that means.
We had an increase of sixty-eight students, and I can, I could account at that moment in time for where twenty-seven went out. I can't tell you the answer to the difference of that.
Okay.
So that is true, there were sixty-eight, like, if you were looking on a screen, sixty-eight plus, twenty-seven minus, I don't know where the delta is.
Okay, but sixty, sixty-eight minus twenty-seven is forty-one.
I understand that.
That doesn't mean we have an increase of, of, an enrollment of forty-one for this year.
Not at that moment, no, right.
Uh, let's talk about this moment.
I, I'm telling you, I, I gave you the information I had. The, the, the number was six hundred and thirteen. From the summer, we had, we had, took in, we added sixty-eight children enrolled, twenty-seven went out, and I don't, I do not know where all the other forty went. That was my exact statement.
That's what we-
I'm not making any statement saying that we're up forty-something students, I didn't say that.
Okay, and fi- fi- and the final question is, uh, you, you gave me, and presumably the entire committee, the names, at, at my request, of the names of the student council people. Uh, but you didn't indicate which one of those, if there's one or two, if there are two, is the, uh, student representative on the stu-, on, on the council, school council.
I, that, that is who chose to participate on the school council. We can put, I am, I hear, I know where you're headed with this. I'm saying to you, well, I do, because it's been a repeated pattern, but, um, I think that, um, they, they reach out for the people who are to be on the school council, and those are the people who chose to participate, we try to balance it. If we don't have one, then we don't have one, we can't make them, but that's who participated on the school councils. It is not a requirement.
Yes, it is.
It's not a requirement, there's a requirement to have student representatives to the school committee, it is not a requirement. You can't make them, you can ask.
You also, yeah, uh, let's not get off track here. Massachusetts General Law says that any school that is a high school, nine to twelve, must have-
A student representative.
A student representative, of course you can't force someone to do it, but if, if you can't comply with the law, you really should be able to explain why. Is there or is there not a student representative on the, on the school council?
I gave you the lesson, I did not see a student representative on the school councils.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, all right, moving along. Um, strategy for continuous improvement.
Okay, so in your, um, packets, we have shared with you this year's version of the district strategy for continuous improvement. Um, we have chosen to use this format for the last several years, we found it to be easy to follow, and one that aligns with um, school improvement plans, with the evaluation system, uh, just the, the entire state, the way it's, it's laid out. So it, um, shows our strategic objectives as they align with the, um, the four areas, the instructional leadership, management, operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. We then go and review the strategic priorities every year. Um, and this is a lot of what we do in the summer at our summer retreats. And then we, um, create this year's strategic action steps. So we have included those for you, um, these are in draft form, we provided these, um, I don't know, the watermark isn't, isn't here right now, but, um, uh, we gave this to, uh, our faculty and staff in their opening day folders. Um, and we, as part of the opening day presentation, you'll see this document, which is how I think we're gonna go about trying to summarize, um, some of the points. Um, we tried to do it in a visual representation around some of the initiatives that we're working on that address these priorities, um, and objectives, and some of the action steps, so um, each administrator and myself is going to go over, uh, one as a highlight, and then we'll be happy to take any questions from members of the school committee, um, on, uh, some of these steps, um, and/or initiatives that we've been talking about for many years, actually. So I'm gonna kick us off, um, um, and take Sandy's opening, 'cause, uh, she was not able to join us. Um, and, and I will close, so, uh, we're gonna talk about Safe and Supportive Schools first, so is everybody on this, the visual dot, great, okay.
Can I ask you a question on this one, right away?
No, 'cause you didn't let me talk.
Well, HQIM.
We're gonna tell you what that is, but I'm not on that one, I'm starting over here on Safe and Supportive Schools, and when HQIM person gets up, we sure are.
But you're gonna, you're gonna end up-
When you, when you get to HQIM, they're gonna tell you what it is, okay? So, all right, so Safe and Supportive Schools, so this is a grant that we have, um, that has been awarded to the district for the past two years, with twenty-three, twenty-four school year is our first implementation year. And it coincides with our social emotional learning and mental health grant. Families have indicated, as I talked about, uh, at our last meeting, uh, when we did the survey about what to do with our ARPA funds, about the importance of the mental health needs for their children, um, and that was a, a primary concern, and our participation in both of these programs aligns with um, our strategy for continuous improvement, looking at the whole child, supporting social emotional health for all students. So that's just Safe and Supportive Schools. Who has learning acceleration? Okay, welcome, Mr. Miller.
Can you get me over here?
What, somewhere where they can see you.
Okay.
Can you move around, I'll see if I can catch you?
Yeah.
All right, it's gonna be the test. Okay, so another act, learning acceleration, we're actually bringing some of the coaches in tomorrow to do some observations and walkthroughs in elementary classroom. So this is actually, this was a three-year grant program. Um, this was through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and its formation was in response to pandemic learning loss, right? So one of the, um, priorities here, um, that we identified was literacy, um, outcomes. And so what we wanted to do first, one of the requirements to be ready for this grant, um, was to ensure that we had high-quality instructional materials, Dennis, HQIM, that's what that stands for. So just good materials in whatever priority area you identified, we identified English Language Arts, in particular literacy learning. Um, and the goal is specific to ensuring that, despite the fact that we know kids were missing skills, and there were gaps in learning, that we were still delivering, um, grade-appropriate content, and then scaffolding it with, um, uh, we don't call it, um, um, remedial, uh, things, but, um, skills that they necessarily didn't cover in depth, because they weren't in school full-time for a period of time, to catch them up while also ensuring that the content is still appropriate at that age level. Um, it's a three-year grant, um, we're awarded up to two hundred and, two hundred K, and it supports, in addition to the actual um, instructional materials, we've reached, we recently purchased into reading, it pays up to fifty percent of those texts, and also the subscription to the online resources, but it also includes coaching and professional development sessions, which we have planned out for the entire year, so that is land, thank you.
So before the next person goes, um, uh, I just wanna say, the reason we're also showing, right, these are all grant programs that support the work that we're doing, um, here in the district, uh, the initiatives, but also the fact that we are using grant funding to offset costs that would be associated to our member towns, right? So this is, um, very helpful support that allows us to provide these types of things, um, and experiences for our students that, um, you know, uh, keep our budget manageable. Thanks, Charles.
Lisa Sullivan? I'm gonna do the HQIM, there's a quiz on what that means later. Um, it's high, high-quality instructional materials, in this case, we're referring to our math curriculum, which we're in the third year of. This grant is the second year, it's called I Ready, it's a K to eight program. Um, the grants is, the purpose is to expand access to high-quality, standards-aligned curriculum materials, as defined by DESI, so that means that we have to choose materials that have the highest ready rating by Ed Reports, and Curate, Curates, a, uh, teacher organization that evaluates us after it's rated the highest. Um, it pays for continuing, um, professional development, this past summer, we had a, um, book club. It was a math book called, um, Building Thinking Classrooms, which is great for helping teachers to expand their, um, ability to get kids to collaborate in the classroom, to have that student discourse and that productive struggle. I guess that's it, and, oh, I'm sorry. See, I knew that ahead of time, I did it on purpose. Um, uh, we also had a PD, a, uh, class in the summer that it was voluntary for teachers, but we were able to use this grant to pay the teachers to participate, and they were able to get a discounted rate at Mount Holyoke for, uh, two graduate credits, which was great, and we had a great participation for that.
All right, guys, for all the instructional materials.
That's the one you wanted to ask about. No?
Early College. Mr. Carpenter, welcome.
Thanks for having me. So, uh, I'm gonna talk a little bit about early college, so this is year five of sort of our early college plan. Um, the expansion of the wall-to-wall program, uh, which is allowing students to get thirty or more credits, uh, free of charge on high school, um, has gone pretty well, really the way we've expanded this year is to offer more classes. Part of doing that has, uh, been offering more classes taught by Mount Auburn faculty, um, whi- which has been great. It fits nicely, um, into instructional leadership, um, under providing students with high-quality materials, curriculum-aligned standards, uh, things like that, but also professional culture, because it's allowed our staff, um, to get some PD. We had two different groups this summer, um, with some PD opportunities with Simon's Rock. One of them was, um, some of our staff members, um, working with their staff members to understand each other's curriculum, also to, uh, bounce some ideas off each other, and then, um, some specific work with individuals as they got ready to either teach classes or, uh, in the case of our, uh, guidance department, um, to, uh, help students select classes. Last year, um, I think we were somewhere in the vicinity of, uh, two hundred and thirty credits, um, that were given out total. Right now, we're targeted for a little over three hundred. It's hard to project right now, because it'll, will include the, uh, spring semester, and we open up, again, um, like an ad drop period, for kids to uh, pick up classes or move out of classes, so, um, we look to be around, uh, three hundred credits for next year. I think one of the most important parts of the early college is that, um, we've also expanded some of our opportunities for our younger students. Last year, we did a field trip in eighth grade, ninth grade, and tenth grade, um, this year, and did some sample classes. We're doing the same thing this year, but also adding, uh, a sample class in seventh grade, probably in the spring, um, to give, uh, the seventh grade an idea of, um, what an early college class would look like. And obviously, um, I don't wanna fail to mention that we do do some opportunities in the summer. We had, um, some students, uh, participate in the curiosity camp that Simon's Rock runs, and occasionally, there's some opportunities for kids to jump in in credit-bearing classes, um, depending on what their offering is in the summer. The second one I'm gonna talk about, um, the Inclusive Academy, uh, falls under professional culture. Um, the Inclusive Academy, the idea is, uh, to implement classroom systems, to determine the impact of a more inclusive classroom, and increase engagement on student outcomes. This is our second year in the Inclusive Academy grant, um, we're getting, um, a lot of help from, um, Katie Novak's organization, uh, they have provided PD, um, for, uh, our secondary staff, and some of the specialists in elementary school, um, as well as, uh, provided some opportunities for us to get some coaching to support that. Also, along with the Inclusive Academy, we developed a, um, PD committee that involved, uh, teachers- that involved teachers and our director of curriculum instruction. And they've met, and they've also brought some of these ideas through the Inclusive Academy, giving more choice to staff in terms of some of the PD selections that we have done. Again, really building that strong professional and positive school culture by continually offering these really good PDs to help our teachers learn and grow. Thank you.
We have questions.
Oh, I can take questions.
Okay. The Inclusive Academy, how many year grants is that?
I'm not exactly sure if the length of it. This is year two of it. I'm not sure if there's an end date to it.
Okay.
It started out as a state grant, but I don't know if they put a number of years on.
And how many, for early college, how many years have we been receiving grants for that?
So this would be year four. The first year we did it was a planning year.
Right.
And basically, we spent a lot of time trying to get, what's the best word? To get recognized as an early college high school and provider.
Are these reoccurring grants or they give you four years at a time?
So there's a couple of different things going on. There's a startup grant where it helps you build the program. Right now, we are at the end of the implementation grant. And then after the implementation grant, there's some opportunities to get some more grant money. But essentially, the implementation grant is meant for you to build, but also start to figure out how do you sustain this between you and your higher education partner.
Carl?
Thank you, Bonnie. Jesse, which grades, in what grades are students at Mount Everett eligible to be, to take part in the early college at Simon's Rock?
Do you mean to earn credits from Simon's Rock?
Yes.
So primarily, it's 11th and 12th graders.
Okay.
We've had a few younger students, only because as we transitioned some of our high school classes, last year this happened where we had some high school electives that became college level. We had some underclassmen in there, and we had an agreement with Simon's Rock that students had chosen those classes based on content, not realizing they'd become early college classes. And so we allowed those students to stay in the class. We do have some opportunities in the summer where we've had in the past, some 10th graders get college credit as sophomores leading into their junior year. Our program's really built around the opportunities for juniors and seniors.
So with approximately, and this is an approximate number, 75 students in last year's junior and senior classes combined. They earned a total of 240 or so?
Somewhere in the vicinity of.
Okay, so an average?
I should say, not all of those came from early college. We did have some students who elected to take some other credits.
How can you get those other credits?
BCC.
Yeah, we have some opportunities with dual enrollment with BCC. Occasionally, students choose MCLA.
Okay, so but to, so let's simplify this equation a bit. So 75 students eligible, about 240 credits an average. Now, obviously, an average is an average. It doesn't point to a particular student of three credits per student, junior and senior, with an opportunity to have as many as 30. No one got 30, did they?
Yes, yeah.
That was a question for Jesse.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I believe so. If I go back, I think we had one student who hit the 30 mark. And then we had a couple who were in the 20s.
Okay, thanks.
I'd have to look back.
Okay, but that information is available to you?
Yeah, I will tell you, though, under the way we have built the early college model, which is how the state kind of guides you, is that there are some students who during their junior year don't take any early college classes. Like, the onboarding for that can happen in senior year. So we had a few students who are seniors now who as juniors did not take, who elected not to take any of those class classes, and now as seniors are taking them. And it's probably the same right now in the junior class. We probably have a handful of kids who have elected not to do it their junior year, but will take a class, two, three, whatever it is.
Well, yeah, thank you for that. And I just want to mention, because it probably sounds to most people that I posed that question as a criticism, which I did not. I just want to know what your experience in this very short period that you've been experimenting, pardon if that's not the correct term, but at the experiment, the school has been, the district has been experimenting with the early college model, what kind of credit experience you've had so far? And it's really early on, so I think it's difficult to draw any conclusions from that. But I didn't want you, I hope you don't think that I'm criticizing that program, because I'm not. I just wanted to see what the experience is.
No, no, I did not take that to be a criticism.
Okay, good.
The reason I offered up the experience of juniors is just so everybody knows, we all know kids are all in different places. And we have some kids who chose last year not to as juniors because they were trying to take other electives. You know, some of our kids who got involved in different things. You know, we try to provide robust internship experiences. And for some kids, you know, when they only have a certain amount of time in their day, we'll pick and choose what makes, works best for their schedule. I think what's been really, I think what's been really encouraging for me to see and for everybody else involved in this is the number of kids who have expressed concerns and confidence about taking the classes, but then once they get in eventually, feeling like, oh, I feel really good that I've done well in these classes. And we had a bunch of kids in the senior class last year who felt that, and some of which who actually are taking classes now in college. We didn't really anticipate doing that. And then you have the same thing with some kids who are like, I don't think I'm ready as a junior. And in some cases, we have kids who have taken multiple classes right now in the fall and intend to take them in the spring. So it's going to take a couple of years for us really to figure out like what it looks like in total. But each of the years we've been involved in this, from the time we were just sort of an early college academy to the wall-to-wall program, each year we've gone up in credits, which I think has been really encouraging, credit-wise.
David?
Do you have some idea about what the take-up rate is? That is, how many students elected to take the college courses versus didn't? Like, there were a substantial number, by the sound of things, who didn't receive any college credits. Were they mostly students who just elected not to take them?
I think, are you talking about last year?
Yeah.
I think there were some kids who did not, who chose not to take them because they were doing other things. So, you know, as a senior at Mount Everett, a student can take a two-credit internship. And we have some kids who go out and spend half the day at some really great job experiences. And so for some of those kids, that was a bigger draw than taking an early college class. And I think for some of our kids who get involved in some of our vocational programming, culinary arts, the building structures class, that takes precedence over maybe taking an early college class. But I think ultimately, when we look at the numbers of juniors and seniors this year, the number of students who are electing not to take college classes is very small. I want to say it's, you know, a small portion of the junior class. I think right now, pretty much every senior we have is slated to take a college class, whether it's now or in the spring. And again, it helps that we have more offerings now. Now that we have a couple of our teachers teaching early college classes, it's really opened it up for more opportunities for kids to jump on board, as opposed to the academy model where at times you're only offering, you know, one or two classes each semester.
So I have to tell you something nice that happened at holiday services. At the end of the service, this family comes over to me, and their son is in 7th grade. And she, the mother said, there better not be a merger because he's doing early college.
It's been, I will say, we've had some families who have joined the district this year, as Beth was saying, the numbers. That's been a draw, but that's something that parents have brought up about, you know, we've heard about the early college program. That's really been enticing for them. And there were a couple, we got a couple of students from, that have lived in other states who, when they heard about early college, were really surprised because they didn't know that existed in their state. And they thought that was, you know, going to be a great thing for their student.
And also, I think the fact that Lindy Ann's been calling the colleges that they're going to, to make sure that they're getting the credits.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
That is a big.
I think, you know, as we, you know, Beth and I have said countless times to people, you know, we've only had this going for a couple of years. We don't really know the impact it has on kids once they enter college. You know, you're kind of guessing, like, based on certain schools, like, how many credits will transfer? Or for the schools where credits won't transfer, what will allow kids to kind of skip over so that they, those kind of prerequisite classes? And I think we're only going to learn that over, you know, 10, 12, 15 years of having this program as far as like, what is the impact it would have at a state school in Massachusetts? What impact would it have in a state school outside of Massachusetts? What does it do in some private schools? What does it do in other private schools? I think for us, no matter what happens, just the idea that kids can take those classes, get used to what it's like to work off a syllabus, work off of some of the expectations that we have around participation and about students kind of leading the class, and having confidence to say, I can do this, you know, I've gotten credits in high school. I, my feeling is a lot of the kids who, you know, went off to college last year, at the end of the year, talking about going to college, felt confident because they're like, I've taken classes, I know the way a college class runs. And now this year, one of the biggest changes we've made, we're running the F and G schedule so that the classes are like an hour and a half, two days a week. So it's getting closer to that college model, which I think is going to help the kids even more.
I hope, you know, among all of you on the ministry team, you can come up with a survey so that we could start getting feedback from students, you know, in what ways.
We do.
You do? Okay.
Lindy will be reporting.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, David.
What I was asking before is, I was actually looking for a more specific answer about what the take-up rate is with students. That is, of the, you know, of the number of college classes that are offered and the number of students, you know, on an average basis, you know, how many of the college classes are the students taking?
Oh, the number of actual courses we're offering right now?
No, no, no. So we have, what was it, 75, I think, students in the two upper grades in high school, Carl said. So what's the take-up rate?
Yeah, last year was.
Right, okay, fine.
So how many, how many students of those 75 were taking college classes last year?
Of, of the 75 students they have available, what, probably each of them fly, seven classes or so?
Per day.
Per day? Right. So if we average that out for per student average, how many college classes were they taking? Per day?
Last year, I would say most of the students who were taking college classes were taking one a day. There were a few that took two a day. So this year, we have quite a few students who are taking three of their seven classes of college classes. We have some who are taking two, and we have some who are taking one. And then we have some who are taking none.
But what is the average?
The average?
He hasn't done it yet, but we'll get it.
I haven't looked at any of the numbers yet in terms of like what the average student, how many classes, college classes, is taking. I'm sure we can look at it.
Is it true you're opening up also more options for courses? Because we're getting more teachers certified as college instructors. So not all classes, like science, math, et cetera, had been able to offer college credits yet for what they teach. So it was limited to certain areas of availability. And that's why the numbers seem a little low. But as they get more teachers certified in the various course of studies, the more kids will be able to take more classes, and the numbers probably will go up.
Okay, so given that, let's go.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Yeah.
Just to your point, we're really excited about an art class in the spring.
My kids are excited.
And we've had, we've had some opportunities to do some theater classes up at Simon's Rock. The timing just hasn't really worked for our kids, but those opportunities do exist, and we're hoping to grow more of them.
Okay. How many, do you have, how many more teachers are in the pipeline for being able to teach college courses?
We're finishing the, I guess you'd call it the certification process. We have two more that are sort of finishing up right now. And we're looking at the next group to come. We probably had five or six that expressed interest. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to get all of them done at the same time. We're still trying to work out what this year looks like. We seem to have a lot of staff members who are interested in doing it. Beth and I have had many conversations about this. We're really hopeful that anybody who wants to gets the opportunity and that there's not a limited number of people who can do it.
Right.
But, you know, to Kim's point, the more people we have, the more opportunities we can offer, especially in non-academic classes. And we're excited about rolling some of those down.
Okay, David, finish. The number, I understand you don't have the numbers now. And I, the number I'm looking for is of the available college classes, how, what was the percentage of take-up? Not, you know, okay, there's more teachers and more classes available now. What, you know, how many of the, what was the average take-up rate of the classes among the students? How many, on, what percentage of the students on average took a college course? That's what I'm wondering about. And if you don't have that number, that's fine. You can present it at a later date, I'll ask again.
I mean, I don't have the exact number, I can't tell you. Like, you know, we have right now 20 seniors taking Writing the Humanities. You know, we have an elective psychology course that has 13 students. We have Government and Politics, I think at last check had 12. Economics, I think had eight. Anatomy and Physiology, I think was closer to 15 or 16. But again, I don't, I haven't seen it since we ended our ad drop period, which ended early last week. So I got to look to see again, but I can give you those numbers if you need.
But the point is, there's that many more offerings. Last year, we had, because it's building. So instead of experimenting, I like to go with the word building, right? We were building because we had to, we had to step up just based on that. But we'll get you exactly what you want.
All right, so get, let's, Dennis has a question.
Dennis's.
Yeah, he said it's in the phone, sorry.
Dennis.
Just a question that I have for you is, have we, have we ever considered, you know, approaching the folks like at the plastic plant that's about, you know, 800 yards from here?
It's the next, it's the next, it's the next bucket. You are just really anticipating.
You are.
You're cheating and taking Chris's.
When Chris talks about innovative pathways, he'll talk about our relationship with them.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
You're on fire today.
Okay.
An additional plastic place.
Yes, you're next, Mr. Thompson, thank you.
No, they get the first six weeks of school if they want it, at least. Okay, so I'm here to talk about innovation pathways. If you're not familiar with that concept, a couple of years ago, Desi came up with this idea of trying to get schools, high schools, to get students more interested, more driven towards what they would call industry, high-needs industries, sectors, things that will help the Massachusetts economy, things that maybe are, where people are, there's a lot of job offerings, we're underemployed, we're not preparing kids for those areas. We want to try to get them interested in those areas. Two of those areas would be manufacturing, another one it'd be information technology. So with the help of Lindy this year, we said, well, we're doing all this stuff. Let's go ahead and apply for it and see if we can get designation. And with that designation, it can come some grant money. So we went ahead and did, and we were approved. So basically, the concept of the pathway is you have two entry-level courses in this, whatever the field you apply for, again, manufacturing and technology for us. Then you have two advanced courses. The two advanced courses don't necessarily need to be technical in nature. They can be a college course, they can be an AP course. But they want to have the kids prove some sort of academic level in addition to their technical level. And then the capstone is a 100-hour internship. And in the application to Desi, you have to have an industry partner signed off saying they will work with you and be your partner. And that's where Plastical Light came in for us. So about a year ago, Lindy and I went over there, we had a conversation with them. They're all on board to support us in every bit of, every capacity they can handle. They will take our high-end engineering kids that want to be plastic engineers. They would take a kid that wants to work on the loading dock and learn how a forklift works. They will do all that for us. So 100-hour internship would be their, probably typically their senior year. So. Um, so in terms of manufacturing, uh, we have some new 3D printing classes that we've created in the last couple of years. Uh, James Sickette teaches some, I teach some. Um, so we have, and we came, came up with an advanced version of that as well this year. So we have a couple of 3D printing classes. We have our robotic engineering class, we have our aerospace engineering class. Those are all our manufacturing side of things, the information technology side of things, all centers around our, um, our partnership with the Cisco Networking Academy. So those are all online courses, but kids have access to courses in programming, cybersecurity, networking, uh, things of that nature. So we had the designation, we are receiving some grant funding right now. We're gonna start to use some of that money to bring in, um, some larger 3D printers, multi-color 3D printers and CNC machines. Those are our first priorities.
Um, a couple of years ago, when you told us about the cybersecurity, you said that UMass Amherst had a program where our kids could get a little advanced standing. Is that still true?
That's still true. That's a, um, that's a Department of Defense, uh, national kind of scholarship thing. So, um, we have, that's something that kids would go to college for two years, then they apply to that program and they can get a scholarship where the federal government will pick up their final two years of college, pay them twenty-five thousand dollars a year for living expenses if they agree to go work for the Department of Defense in cy- cybersecurity. For an, I, I don't know the contract, how many years, but. So that's something I do make our kids that take cybersecurity, I make them aware of tho- those things. UMass is a partner in that program, University of New Haven is a partner in that program. I think WPI is as well. So we, uh, this, not this past group of kids, but the, the previous year. So the class of twenty-twenty-two, um, had, we had a big chunk of tech kids in that, in that group. There was a lot of robotics kids. And we had, uh, we have three or four of them majoring in cybersecurity now in college.
That's great.
Yeah. So that's Innovation Pathways.
That's great.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
And the last one is the Transcend Grant. I don't think I have to go over the details of that, but, um, you know, uh, partner, some of our partners who have, um, been helping us with, um, Innovation Pathways or, um, internships have agreed to be part of either our design team and/or the community, um, grant, which, um, a portion of the Transcend Grant. So continuing our thought process with these partners and, you know, what else can we do to prepare our kids for whatever, um, their future holds? And how can we reinvest in the Berkshires and our communities, um, as a result? So they're very excited about, um, being part of this work as well. So that is just a snippet of all the activities and action steps that we're doing to meet these goals and strategies for, um, instructional outcomes and student outcomes. Um, so we would, we, we'd need the school committee to.
Approve it?
Yes. That's the goal.
So I will take a motion from anyone who would like to do it um, to approve the, what's the title?
Strategy for Continuous Improvement. It's Julie's favorite thing to say.
SVRSD's Strategic Objectives for Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Four. Our strategic.
Our strategy.
Strategy for Continuous Improvement. All right, we have a second on that. Right, Kim seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Kim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I, I, I didn't hear the motion.
The motion is that the, uh, we approve the Strategy for Continuous Improvement Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Four as presented. That's a second, okay, we're up to you.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to abstain from it.
Okay, David?
I will abstain.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, um, school committee. Uh, that's thirteen B.
So, would you like to, like me to talk about this?
Yes, please.
So, uh, a couple of years ago, we tried to, uh, put together, uh, at the suggestion at one of the conferences at the MAS, SMASC, we tried to, uh, put together a year-long agenda so the school committee could, that does align with our Strategy for Continuous Improvement. Again, we're always striving for alignment so people will know, um, you know, what to expect. And so we put together a draft, um, idea of which month we can expect to be talking or doing a presentation on which item. Usually it aligns with, um, the requirements or, um, I have a lovely, um, superintendent's checklist that comes from the state. So whatever we need to do to meet all of those, uh, criteria, but it also gives the school committee an idea of what is coming up. So this is what we put together, um, I want to say two years ago, and we've been kind of using it loosely. But I, I'm, I'm not saying you have to go ahead. We have been following it for this year, but I wanted to at least share it with you if you guys want to take some time and, um, make some suggestions or if you feel comfortable and you want to recommend. But we have been following it to the best of our ability, um, as a guideline.
Okay, um, why don't we say, everybody look at it and it will go on the next agenda for approval? All right? Rather than, since some of you have seen it for the first time in the past couple of days. So if there's no objection, it'll go on the October twelfth agenda. Seeing no objection, it's going on the October twelfth agenda. It's thirteen B. If you have any suggestions or questions, please forward them.
Or suggestions.
Or, you're right, or question to Beth and myself. Okay. Um, MAS C resolutions.
So we, again, we just included this in your packet. Um, we do have to, um, I believe, um, Dennis has been our person who has been the resolutions, uh, you know, representative of the school committee for, uh, at the, at the conference. But we want to at least get these in your packet, give you some time to consider them. And then if you want to, um, then move to, you know, at the next meeting as well to be ready to vote on.
Yes.
So that we can give, um, Dennis the.
Go ahead.
Right. On what the committee's opinion would be, and he'd be our voting member.
Yep, so V for October, yes, Kim.
Thirteen C in here? Because I see B and I see D.
Uh, no, we just, we just, uh, we, we are working on our alphabet.
Right.
But thank you for that. We removed, we removed what was going to be in there, um, and did not change the letter, but thank you.
Okay, so thirteen D is also for October twelfth. If you go over and have any suggestions or, please let us know.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, thirteen D for all these various resolutions, oh, what are we going to be voting on? Are we going to be voting to adopt these at the school committee?
You're voting to have your school committee representative at the conference, um, deliver this committee's opinion on whether or not to support Resolution One, for instance.
Just Resolution One or all?
No, all, I'm, I'm saying for an example. Would, would this committee be recommending Resolution One to be supported, yes or no? You'd, you guys would vote, Dennis would register that in the full resolution meeting at MAS C.
Well, I, I'm, I, I've, I'm going to be at the MAS C conference in November.
Correct, you can only have one.
Yes.
So the school committee makes a single vote?
Correct.
And?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's delivered by the person who is that designated, yes, part of?
It, it, uh, Dennis, who is our voting repres- representative
Mm-hmm.
at, at the MAS, SMASC, uh, joint conference, is he bound by to vote in accordance with the committee vote?
Yes.
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Yeah, we give him a vote and he delivers it. Okay, so please read those and ready for the, that to be also on ten, twelve.
I'm forming this one.
Okay, unfinished business, I don't think we had, or did we?
No.
All right, finance committee, Sarah's not here. Community relations, we basically went through that. We, um, can, today's meeting did not take place of that subcommittee due to the lack of a quorum. Um, policy, Dennis?
No.
Okay.
We haven't had any.
Personnel negotiations, we have not had. Art?
Nope.
Okay, Jim?
Nothing to report.
Executive minute, no.
Status same as last report.
Curriculum, subcommittee, no, we have not met. Um, and liaison, no, no, no. And ad hoc region, we're not doing that. Okay, future agenda items.
What's, a, a very quick question for me. Uh, Dennis, I'd just like to renew my request for a policy subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, we have the same items for future. We now have to go into the executive session. So we'll take a momentary break while.
Now we have to.
While we get someone to make the motion. Thank you, Kim.
Make a motion to adjourn.
You've got to read the executive session.
You have to read the yellow.
Oh, I can read the yellow. You read the yellow. I don't have to.
Okay, Jim. Yes, we do.
Okay.
Except change one thing.
We hit, do you have to return?
It's not to return, we have to return. So cross out not, and it's, and to return to open session. Go to it.
I move to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining of the SVREA Unit A. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position and to return to open session.
Do we have a sec? Thank you, Kim. All right, vote, Kim?
What, can we discuss, don't we have a discussion on this? Any, any motion? I know, but any, any.
Okay, then what, what do you want to talk about?
Who is Unit A?
The teachers.
Uh, I was addressing that to the person making the motion, but okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right.
I have a question.
What?
What are we returning to open session to discuss?
Adjournment.
What happens is, there is, it, when you say to return to open session means you're going to announce something. Okay?
Right, but what are we announcing?
You don't know until you vote on it.
We have to go into the executive session.
Executive session.
Okay.
All right, Kim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Harl?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Um, the Southern Berkshire Regional School Committee and the Southern Berkshire Regional Education Association, Unit A, are entering into a memorandum of agreement. And the agreement has created, um, six stipended positions. And the MOA does not establish a pre- this precedent as a precedent or a pre- past practice. And we ratified it and it was approved. We now have to vote it again in open session. So I will take a motion that we have had.
So moved.
Thank you.
Do you have to open that open session?
No, we went back in to open that we hadn't adjourned for. Is that a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was a second. All right, therefore, um, this is a vote to, in open session to approve, um, these stipends. Kim?[1762.91]